Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is, welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of November 18th, 2020. I'm going to take my computer and just slide it over a little bit so we can all see the flag. I ask that we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. That our public rights stands. One nation, indivisible, in liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you, everyone. Again, I apologize for holding everyone up a few extra minutes. Let's go right to the clerk. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to approve the consent agenda seconded by Tonys. Are any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is the submission of minutes of previous meetings, item A1.
Chairman, this is Tim. I'll make a motion to approve.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to approve seconded by Tonys. Are any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is the first public hearing this evening. This is for the intoxicating beverage license renewals for 2020 through 2021. It also is in concert with item E1.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we combine, or I suggest that we combine both of them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to combine this item with item E1. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you. As the clerk pointed out, this is our first public hearing of the evening, so I'm going to open up a public hearing, and I will ask if there's anyone to speak in favor. And I'm going to stop for just a moment, and we're still on that subject, but Chris Vitale, I'd ask that you point out if there's UC hand raised that I need to call out if I miss anything, please, and thank you.
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. So I'm going to start again. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There are two hands raised. I see Mike and Lisa have their hands raised.
Okay, so if you'll just give me, ah, this is what I was looking for. I wanted to change my screen setup so I can see some of that. I'm just not seeing it at the moment, so now I do. All right, so we have two hands raised, and I'm going to start with Mike. Mike, if you could please state your name and address for the record, please. You are muted currently. So we cannot hear you currently. I'm going to ask you to unmute, Mike. I'm addressing him in the familiar because it just says Mike on there.
That better?
Yes, now we can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael McCottle, MC Capella, RDLA, and I might be buttoning before I should, but I'm here about a pocket spot on Rock Street, so I'm probably, I'm very new at this, so be with me as well.
Absolutely, absolutely no problem. What I am going to ask you to do is, yes, it is a bit early, we're on the public hearing for liquor licenses, so unless you...
We'll wait until the subject comes up.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so next hand raise is Lisa Fonseca. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I raised my hand because it had nothing to do with the liquor license. I'm asking, is there a way that I can see everybody?
That would be in your settings of Zoom. Unfortunately, I'm not able to walk you through that, but it is a possibility. Most likely clicking Participants down on the bottom, or on the top, you can change it from Speaker View to kind of a, I like to call it the Brady Bunch View, so you can see almost everybody on your screen.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? I'm going to give it just an extra second, please, everyone? Okay, what's this council's pleasure?
Chairman, this is Tim. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Tony, second.
Motion by Tim to close the public hearing seconded by Tonys. Are any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. What's this council's pleasure?
Chairman, this is Tim. I'll make a motion to approve the intoxicating beverage license renewals for 2020, 2021.
Tony, second.
There's a motion made by Tim seconded by Tony to approve the intoxicating beverage license renewals. Are any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, the next item is item B2, and this is an advertised public hearing regarding the proposed bicycle connector route. It also includes agenda item I3.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we combine both.
Second.
A motion made by Tony seconded by Mary to combine this item with I3, which does make total sense. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. So as pointed out again by the clerk, this is our second public hearing of the evening, and before I open up the public hearing, I am going to ask our Community Development Director, Diane Williamson, to maybe give a quick overview of what is being considered this evening and why we have a public hearing this evening, and again, just a quick overview of the next steps before I open it up for public comment. Diane?
Hi, good evening. Diane Williamson, Director of Community Development. Thank you, Nathan.
Of course.
So, this is the public hearing on the Bike Path Connector Project, and I also, just before I forget, Chris Vitale, if you can share the screen or delegate the screen sharing to Arnold Robinson, our consultant, who will also be presenting tonight. So, this is the, sort of the end, if you will, of the Phase 1 part of our project. This is a project that we received a grant to do a design and permitting for a bicycle connector from East Bay Bike Path into the downtown area and beyond to the southern end of Bristol. We were fortunate to get this grant, which is for the study, design, and permitting only. The goal is to get shovel-ready plans so that we can be poised for future grant funding to implement this project. We had hired a consultant team of Fasen O'Neill and Tool Design, and they have been working hard with us. We've been working really, pulling together a lot of different venues for the public outreach, and Arnold will get into that a little bit more, but we've had a really extensive public outreach, public comment period, and we are at the point now to recommend the preferred route to the Town Council. The goal tonight would be to hear from the public. It is a public hearing, and the reason it is an advertised public hearing is because even though we've had a really robust public outreach and public engagement period, we thought it was important, as I believe that, you know, the council would agree, that it's important to hear from the folks directly and have them speak to you directly about any of their comments, questions, concerns, before you take action. So the next, if we are successful tonight getting through all of the public comments, we would ask that the council move forward with the recommended route. You can certainly do that tonight if you're ready. If not, we would certainly understand, and you can continue it and ask the consultants maybe for more information. But again, the goal is to move this into the design and permitting, and the consultants have not been authorized to move forward into that phase until the council agrees and moves forward on the recommended route. So we're going to be, when that happens, we'll be continuing the public engagement. We have a lot of work to do with more dialogue with stakeholders and property owners, but we can't really get into that next phase until we decide the route that this project will take. So that's, I think, an overview. Unless you have any specific questions for me, I can turn it over to Arnold Robinson, the project consultant from Fasen O'Neill, who can walk you through the presentation, and then you can open it up for public comments.
Excellent. Let's turn it over to Arnold, please. If Arnold's speaking, we can't hear him. Arnold, you're muted currently.
Yes, I've just been unmuted.
Excellent.
How's that? Thank you very much. So we're going to try in about, I think, nine minutes to give a very quick summary of what has been a three-month process, and mainly it's because recognizing this audience tonight, we'll have people who have participated in some or all of that process, and to catch everybody up before comments are offered at that public hearing element of tonight. This has been posted to the website for the past five days, and it builds on prior work that we've done. So I'm just going to try to touch on the process and the recommendation that's before you, and then that will set the table for the hearing. So, if folks remember, when we started off the process, we looked at four different route alternatives, had a fantastic public meeting on that in August, got a lot of great feedback along with that. We developed some cost estimates for those four potential routes so that people could react to those particular options that were open to the town. And a big part of the project has really been making sure that there's very robust public input for an extended period of time. So we held our first public workshop in August. There was a request to continue that even longer, and it continued to November 10th, and we did a recent workshop October 22nd. We had a total of about, I think it was about 80-odd people participating in those workshops. We've had a website that's been linked to the town's website. We've been working on social media to get the word out to folks. We've gotten some great feedback that way. The website, I think, has been a pretty successful tool. We've had 1,000 distinct users, individual users, about 1,500 visits by folks, and they've looked at the route maps, offered us comments, and after there's media coverage, we've been getting some fantastic surges on the website. We've had a Google survey open that's gotten 85 direct comments. We've gotten 23 project emails to the email site, and I think one of the most popular tools has been folks posting very specific comments on locations of those four route alternatives or other parts of town they're interested in seeing connectivity on. And this is good and bad. This is folks who say, "I really like this route," or "I'm really worried about this particular location." You know, how does that get addressed? So 82 folks commented that way. There's been some good media coverage. We've had about four different articles in the Bristol Phoenix. We were out in person as much as possible. We had flyers that went up around town at the library, other locations, Town Hall during early voting. We were at the State Street Fair, and in total, we were able to get 190 substantial comments from folks. And just to give you a quick sense of those, the West Route, the Purple Route, is the one that we're presenting tonight, had strong support, about 76 positives. High Street had some, Wood Street had a little bit less. Interesting, a lot of folks really interested in improving overall bike and pedestrian connectivity across town. A lot of opposition to crossing Medicom Avenue with any facility, opposition to the routes that had gone on Griswold, and in opposition to loss of on-street parking were in those, some of those themes that were in the comments. So when we get to this and we sort of think, well, what would a route look like? This was the subject of really the workshop on October 22nd. One of the things I think is important to circle back on is what's in a name, and there's a lot of different terms that get thrown around interchangeably, and they are not interchangeable. So we're all blessed with having the East Bay Bike Path nearby, which is a pretty unique facility of a separated, multi-use path, but pedestrians use sidewalks, smaller children do sidewalks. There are some cities and communities that have bike lanes that are on the road. There's what we call a multi-use shared path, which is what the East Bay Bike Path really is. They're sharing the street with cyclists and just sort of marking it so that it's a shared space between the two. And so when we talk about this in the second workshop, we really, so what does this mean for Bristol? You know, all of that's kind of academic, but what does it mean for Bristol specifically? And the key you're going to see when I show you the route map is that different conditions require different design solutions, and so this is not a replicate the East Bay Bike Path north to south, nor is it, you know, have bike lanes on streets the entire way. So we've got a mixture of treatments depending on the roads themselves. So I just want to do a quick walk on those segments, and then we'll wrap it up. So the first and sort of largest segment is the one that runs to the south where the roadways are more open. We consider this to be from the Mount Hope Bridge area, Ferry Road, and Hope Street to where it intersects into downtown. This is the character of that roadway off to the side between the stone walls and the curbing line. There's a lot of openness there, a lot of space, and many communities have put along sort of what's called a side path, and that would be usable by both cyclists and by walkers and people with strollers and anyone who wants to use that space. There are significant trees on this route, absolutely. This is a scenic highway designated by the state, and there's a mixture of tree types. These are some fantastic chestnuts that are down by, which are in the state right-of-way, and then further on, a lot of the character of the road is some smaller trees, but a lot of the character is defined by trees that are on private property, adjacent private property. And so to figure that out, the details of that, we did a tree survey, walked this with the forester, actually had one of the professional tree firms go out, measure all those trees, look at which ones were in which kind of conditions, so we have that full survey. And so really, the approach to this is to have what I would call almost a super sidewalk configuration. This is not the East Bay Bike Path where everything gets clear-cut and is, you know, zooming fast, but it is sort of something that we've wanted for a long time, which is a sidewalk or some kind of a better condition on that west side of Ferry Road where walkers and all different users can use it, but we also preserve its character, and that means keeping those trees that are in good shape and designing around those, marking those for safety. The other good section is that there are fewer driveway crossings on this zone than other options that we've looked at. You switch character pretty radically when you get into downtown, the historic part of the downtown neighborhoods. And so when we look at what I would call the High Street corridor and then turning to get to Thames, Constitution, or Church, a lot of cyclists already on the road, if you look at Strava, if you look at some of the other apps, there's a lot of folks out there using these roads already. The goal really is to keep the conditions as they are, but make them safer for both drivers and cyclists, and so that means signage and marking and enhanced safety at the crossings where streets have stop signs already, but you want all those users to behave well when they're going through that zone. Typical configurations you'll see in locations are where you simply mark that it's a shared road with a share row markings, and you have enhanced signage at the crossings to mark the routes. And importantly for this, we at this point are proposing absolutely no changes to parking. We recognize that businesses, residences are dependent on on-street parking in these streets, and that shouldn't be disrupted. Wayfinding is absolutely critical in a zone like this, where right now, in a lot of our surveys, we heard from folks that they currently use these streets, but they don't know where to go next when they're moving through the spaces or trying to get to different parts of town. And then crossing options are obviously another critical factor, and having enhanced crossings with painted crosswalks with potentially some flashing yellows at key crossings and places that create a safe zone for cyclists who are using those streets but crossing. The last part is Thames Street, so if the upper sections get us down Constitution or Church, those are both two options, take us to Thames Street. One of the things we're talking about with Thames Street in a longer-term phase would be the concept of a shared street. For the first phase, we'd be looking at Thames Street to sort of be typical of what you see on High, where there's enhanced safety crossings and there's marking on the pavement. But one thing that has come up, especially with this COVID moment, has been how we use our streetscape spaces, in-street dining, how we deal with stormwater, how we put trees out there. And so Thames Street is an ideal candidate for potentially being what's called a shared street, where cars are absolutely still there and still progressing north-south, but there is enhanced space for walkers, for cyclists, to also be users of that space. Deliveries are still allowed, parking's still allowed in zones, just as it is now. So right now, this is a, I think would be a second phase for this project. It would not be part of your first iteration of it, but we got a lot of good reaction from folks about the concept of making Thames Street very pedestrian-friendly for certain blocks, very restaurant-friendly, very stormwater-friendly through that approach. So a, we did a rough approach on this where we sort of, early in the project, said, well, if you did this, how would flexible uses like this work? How might Thames Street look with adapted stormwater? It was interesting, we did this right before the council actually decided to allow the dining on the right-hand side to continue for the rest of the year, and so if I were to change this, what you're really looking at is the ability to flexibly use spaces, not that that space on the left has to be dining, but that you have the ability to use Thames Street as a sort of event gathering space, retail-friendly kind of a space. So when we talk about, you know, those different pieces, what we've imagined is that you want this to be a phased project, you want the ability for, you know, to sort of take this to the next level. So tonight's obviously your hearing, you'll get public comments. At some point, the council will take an action on a preferred route, and it would move to schematic design and permitting for its next phase and seeking funding for implementation. And that would be the next place. So we're very early, and we always say in schematic design, there's more public engagement to do, but until a route is selected as a preferred one for the next level of exploration, that's your next step. I do want to note that we've had incredible level of involvement from people on this project, members of the council who've attended our hearings, who've been, great comments on the updates, we've had a project steering committee that's been fantastic, all volunteer, and literally hundreds of hours that folks have spent at the workshops, putting in their own public comments, sending us articles, sending us their ideas on mapping. It's really been a phenomenally inclusive project, and we really appreciate that level of interest and passion from folks. So I think that's it for my presentation part. Happy to answer any questions that can fill in any gaps.
So I'd like to, before, unless there's a clarity question that the council may have, I'd like to open up to the public first, hear their support or possibly not support on it, and then ultimately, once we close the public hearing, we can open up to the council to hear their thoughts. So Arnold, thank you. Diane, thank you. That was clear and crisp information. Appreciate it. So I'm going to now open up the public hearing, so this is officially open to the public hearing, and I'm going to ask, is there anyone here to speak in favor? And I'm seeing a couple of hands. I'm going to start with, first on the list, which is Bethany Foster. If you could state your name and, sorry, your full name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Bethany Foster, and I live on 33 Roma Street. I just wanted to speak out in favor of the Bike Path extension. I actually had a chance a couple months ago to ride my bike down that path now, just to see what it was like from the downtown area to Monkey Ranch Lane, and I can say that it was not pleasant at all, and I can see why a lot of the college students feel very isolated where they are if they don't have, if they don't have cars, because it's really not a safe path. So I'm very much in favor of this. I love the idea of what we're going to do for the first phase, just kind of open that up, get a safe path all the way to the bridge, and I'd also love to see what we can get done for the second phase. So, that's all.
Thank you. Next is Mary Kay Wright, so if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Mary Kay Wright at 165 Wood Street.
Welcome. I should have said welcome to Bethany too, so welcome to both of you.
Thank you. Yeah, I am extremely excited about this and completely support this Ferry Road option. I just think it's going to add measurable benefits for our town, and I, I just had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask, is I noticed when Arnold was showing the purple path, you had sort of dotted or dashes from the purple part going down Wood Street and then, I think, taking a left at Wally, which it seems to me that if you could figure out how to, how to get from, you know, the west side of the Ferry Road over to Wally and taking that route, it would be the safest way rather than going down to Lobster Pot and then trying to cross Hope Street and go up that steep hill to High Street? And so I was wondering if that's still in the option, and then I just had one other question about Thames Street, but...
Why don't you ask both Mary Kay and then I'll ask to respond to those.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I love the Thames Street, you know, option, but I wasn't totally clear about exactly how the bike route is going to be signed and what your idea was about how the bike route would work on Thames Street? If you could be, clarify that a little bit more.
Arnold?
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So the dash lines on the crossing of Wally, so at this point, for the Purple Route, the concept of making it from the west side of Ferry slash south side of Hope over to Wood Street is not on the list, is not on the plan as a dashed line, and the reason is a sight distance issue, that it's for users who are coming from north-south, you have a great view down both ways. For users that are coming from south to north, those corners are blind corners. You can't see the traffic that's coming around the corner to make it on that direction. So at this point, that dashed option is off the table. If Purple, you know, if the council acts on the purple line and wants to re-explore that dash thing, we can, but we did run some numbers in terms of looking at sight distance. The other key is at that corner, Ferry Road speed is 35 miles per hour. You're just coming down from the 35 into the 25 zone, whereas the crossing at the High Street is the posted 25 mile an hour zone, so that's one of the reasons that that crossing at High is recommended, and also has a good, has an acceptable sight distance. On the Thames Street, yeah, I apologize, I think time got in the way of my clear explanation. So at the first stage, Thames would be treated the same way that Constitution and High would be for their route. So you'd essentially have on the street itself, you know, painted markings that acknowledge that this is where cyclists are allowed to go. We'd also have a pretty robust signage program that talks about sharing the road and marking that in the vertical so that those signs are visible. But one of the things that most successful urban or downtown bike paths have done is to enhance their crossing safety. One of the things that's absolutely critical is that all users respect other users at four-way stops or crossing points, and we've, we had a lot of discussions with folks about cyclists and some drivers who just blow through those intersections. And so that's a behavior that design can help to ameliorate, you can't control everybody, but you can do much more robust crossings in terms of their width and how they're painted and how they're signaled, and you can also post signs that are very particular to cyclists for stopping at those intersections to deal with that as well. So imagine Thames Street as a sort of, it's the same route that it currently has, but it is much better marked both on pavement and in signage, and I think the other thing we have to remember is that the crossing at the north part where it joins the East Bay Bike Path definitely needs to be enhanced. The town has the plan for reworking the entrance to Independence Park that they did quite a while ago, but that crossing definitely needs to be enhanced so cyclists are stopping. a while ago, but that crossing definitely needs to be enhanced so cyclists are stopping and are walking across that crossing point. So that's changing behavior from both user groups, but especially cyclists, is key.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Arnold, that was very clear. Okay. Next, I have Mike User, and if you could state your full name and address for the record. You are muted currently. Mike, we cannot hear you. You need to unmute. All right, I'm going to come back to Mike. Next was Nancy Chase, if you could please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Nancy Chase, I'm at 21 Constitution Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. First, I wanted to speak in favor of all the hard work and efforts that have gone into the planning, and I just want to offer a couple of observations and also ask about if Thame Street is going to be considered to remain two-way, or if it's going to remain one-way, because I would have concerns about business traffic being diverted because of those traffic patterns.
If I can answer that first one, you can see is that it's definitely that Thame Street will continue unabated in both parking and in traffic.
Okay, great. I did participate in one of the sessions the day after. I was on my front porch at 21 Constitution, Lower Constitution, and a biker ended up, someone opened their car door and a biker ended up flipping over and landing on their head, and luckily, they had a helmet on and it was fine. But day-to-day, I just know how many people are in and out for the coffee shops, you know, the trucks that come in and unload on Lower Constitution in lieu of like, you know, backing up Hope Street. So I do, I am kind of a safety nerd in that way. I did participate in a pedestrian safety project years ago with Councilman, you know, Bloro, you know, helped make that light at Colt Andrews Reality, and the town helped with the, you know, the flagging signs. I do think that a lot of the safety is like a re-education of people, and I am concerned about the sense of arrival as you come down Ferry Road onto Hope Street. Like, I do feel like there needs to be a very, a big sense of arrival around the Lobster Pot, Restaurant, I mean, it opens up, you have that sense, but that closes off quickly with a tree canopy, and you kind of feel like, oh, there's this big open vista, and then all of a sudden, it closes off and you feel like you're in kind of a neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, you know, Constitution Street comes. And I shared this at another meeting, but I've had to call the police a number of times for accidents on the street, both before and after, you know, the work on the road where crosswalks were eliminated, but if you're coming from Constitution, trying to, you know, heading, heading east, trying to take a right or left onto Hope, it's very difficult visibility with the cars parked. It's just really hard to see taking a right or a left. And when you add bicycles to that mix, I'm very concerned. I mean, I personally feel more comfortable crossing at Church because I feel like cars have a better sense of arrival by the time they get to Church, that they know that they're coming into more of a dense area. I'm sure it can all be mitigated by sense of arrival, but I do, based on my experience, I'm very concerned about safety, just as you're coming into that corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lauren Byrne, if you could please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, Lauren Byrne, spelling, hopefully as you can see on the screen, I live at 4 Paul Street, and I wish to speak in support of the Purple Route. Since I've been living on Paul Street for the past 10 years, this is very similar to the route that I already use when I commute to campus for my work, and I think this route will make it much safer, and I look forward to it being implemented. So I hope that the council will approve it for moving forward, given the support that has been generated through the very fantastic process. I do wish to also speak in favor of maintaining the further investigation of that Purple dotted route. I didn't quite follow exactly what Arnold was just saying, but I think there are some concerns about those two intersections that need explored further. Currently, my preferred route is to go over to Wally Street and across Wood. It feels safer to me to cross 114 there at the intersection with Wood, so I would advocate for maintaining that for further investigation. Thank you.
Very succinct, Lauren, thank you. Next is Mike User, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
McCardle, 23 Rock Street, Bristol.
Welcome.
About the bike path, I'm concerned, you show Ferry Road how beautiful it is as you go down it, and the change, I love Bristol, it's beautiful, but a lot of places, I always come back here. But the scene you show the Ferry Road is absolutely beautiful, and it seriously that the bike path is a big promotion for businesses, of course it is, and the need to go to Mount O'Bridge, it baffles me. I mean, we have Coast State Park, a great donation, and I just understand why we have to go to Mount O'Bridge. It's safety reasons, it's traffic reasons, and, but, that's my input on that, and I might even hit tonight for that, but that's a little comment I'd like to make, and like I said, Ferry Road is beautiful just the way it is.
Mike, should I take that as, that you don't see the value, so in essence, speaking against?
I do not value the extension of the bike path at all.
So I'm going to notate that, and I know the clerk will, for the record, we're at this, at the point where we're asking for people speaking in support, and we'll certainly have people speaking against shortly, but we'll notate that, you don't have to call back again, or speak again, we'll make sure we notate your comments accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Donna Kublin, if you could please, I hope I said your last name correctly, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Donna Kublin, and I'm at 341 Thame Street, Unit 309. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I need a pro or con. I would tell you that I am very, very supportive of a bike connector, and I like what has been designed in the Purple Route, from the Ferry Road right up to either Constitution or Church, and I agree with Nancy on her comments. But my concern is the Thame Street area, and I have mentioned this at the October 22nd meeting, and one of the, you've already addressed the parking question that I had there, because I know businesses rely on that very heavily. But I am concerned because of the congestion in that area, the trucks in that area, the access from, you know, the various roads that come into Thames, the library, particularly the post office, a lot of trucks that go in and out, you all know this, and the parking garages from Stone Harbor, kind of mini-mans get, all get dumped onto Thame Street. So I think it's great to make it a safer routing from the bike path to something, and, but, and I trust that the process will include a very extensive look at what is the best safety aspect for the design to make it safe for everyone. And so if that can be assured, particularly, my concern is you're coming off the bike path, which is wide open, no congestion, you know, kind of can zoom along in your bike or however you're motorizing, and, you know, and then all of a sudden, you're coming into this heavily congested area. So that's, I just want to register that again, it's, I would love to see this work, but I'm just worried about that.
Thank you. Next is Zach Rivers. Zach, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please. You are currently muted. There you go.
Hi, yes, Zach Rivers of 1 State Street. I just wanted to speak in favor of the West Route down Thame Street for the bike project. I'm a business owner in that area, as well as a representative for the Bristol Merchants' Association. I feel that this would definitely be a great asset to the town, and also, you know, definitely help as an economic driver, bring people into the downtown area for all of the local restaurants, shops, retailers, who I'm sure could use the business. You know, right now, I just, you know, the people, there's a lot of people that are coming to Bristol on the bike path, and unfortunately, a lot of them don't make it really into town, and I think this would be, you know, give them a great opportunity to tie the town together to the bike path and, you know, allow visitors to explore Bristol from the bike path as well. So just want to speak in support of this, and hope to see you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I would just bring to your attention a letter that I forwarded to all the council members earlier from individual Adina DeZonias of 356 High Street, just for the record, that her, her letter is also in, in favor of the, of the route.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Okay. Is there anyone to speak against? I have Diane McGee, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Diane McGee, 165 High Street.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. And, and thank you, Mr. Robinson, for your presentation, I appreciated it, it gave me information that I didn't have. I was hoping to be persuaded to support this plan, but it actually confirmed for me what my greatest concerns were. One thing I would just like to bring forward, first of all, is the idea of public outreach. And in this particular instance, I think that the public outreach was not, in fact, robust. And how do I know that? Because I live on the street of the Purple Route, and when I contacted my neighbors, many of them were surprised and greatly distressed by this. And my first request to the council is that the matter be tabled at least to the next hearing, so that the citizens, the residents actually in the area could be canvassed as to what their opinions are. I'm certain that you could find 190 people to favorably say, could I have access to High Street? It's a beautiful street, and anyone who walks it knows that it's a beautiful street. My first question to Mr. Robinson is, can he guarantee to all the residents on the Purple Route that no one will ever come forward and ask for a dedicated lane or to remove on-street parking?
So Diane, what I may ask is, is it certainly, I'll ask if, if Mr. Robinson would respond, if you could just ask, if you could just total your questions?
Yes.
If you don't mind, please.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, thank you. So again, the first issue is one of meaningful notice, meaningful public engagement, and that means really canvassing the people who are going to be most affected, who are going to be ingress and egress out of driveways, who have to worry now about the bicycles coming. The traffic flow is another issue. So we see bikers coming, you know, bicyclists coming on the weekend and occasionally, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about rerouting traffic from the bike path, which is significantly more than the occasional individual or a couple of people that would just come up and down the street on a regular basis. If it's not a significant number of people that would be rerouted through this residential area, then my next question is, why would we spend a million and a half to three and a half million on this project? What is, what is the end goal? I was very concerned in the, in the paperwork with the expression "complete street," and if anybody knows what that means, they should be concerned, because complete streets do, in fact, remove on-street parking, and that would be disastrous for the people on High Street. The other, the other item that I think has not been considered, and having lived in this town for more than 30 years, is that the route will not be restricted to Constitution Street. With fair certainty, people who come down Ferry Road and come up High Street will soon find that you can drive the total length of High Street and pick up the bike path at Getera School. And that will happen, and there will be no precautions in place for that contingency, which I expect will be a certainty, and not just a contingency. So I speak not only on behalf of the people from Constitution Street to the Lobster Pot, but I'm concerned about my friends and family who live at the other end, and they don't even know that they're exposed to this problem. In the end, it appears to be a bicycle path to nowhere, and I, I think that the burdens outweigh the benefits. I think that the risk to the people who actually reside on High Street is great. There are many contingencies that would have to be taken into account if, in fact, Mr. Robinson suggests he cannot guarantee that off-street or on-street parking is in jeopardy, such as having to put your trash bin out. I'm concerned, Ms. Chase made two comments, in her comments, in support of this route, and they support what I'm suggesting. And she said, one, she saw someone get hit by a car door open and went flying, and the other one with regard to the traffic. Each one of those concerns made reference to on-street parking and the damage and the danger it poses to the bicyclists. That's evidence of an ensuing problem that is going to have to be taken care of in the future. Nobody wants to see a bicyclist be hurt. Nobody on High Street, nobody on the plan, nobody in town. This is unusual to the extent that this bicycle path is being put in a town where the homes sit on the sidewalks. This is not Blackstone Boulevard, where they have the on-street parking and a giant street. They widen to the street, they have three lanes, and it's working, but I drive Blackstone Boulevard fairly frequently, and it is sort of chaotic, and they had to make some major changes to the routing of traffic onto the street. So this is very different than Blackstone Boulevard. It is a small street. Yes, it's wider than most of the streets in Bristol, but this is an historic town. And that's the last point, and I think Mr. McCardle made a good point. Bristol sits on the Rhode Island Scenic Register, because in fact, it says specifically, it's not just High Street, but it's Hope Street and Ferry Road on August 8th, 2000, that the, and I'm quoting from the, the record of the, the finding of the scenic route, it says, quote, "The most telling attribute is the nearly unbroken allee," and that's spelled A-L-L-E-E, "of mature trees which line the entire length," which they're speaking of about five miles of 114. And even the Bristol Town Comprehensive Plan of 2016 makes specific reference to the fact that this scenic roadway, quote, "is for the purpose of the preservation of the visual qualities and enhancements to the area." And, and what the town council wrote and adopted and the state approved in this plan, I think is the best feeling of most of the people, that if I were given a chance to canvas them officially, would agree. The town plan says, quote, "The community visioning process indicated that the residents of Bristol have a desire to retain Bristol's small-town character and natural beauty." I submit to the Honorable Town Council that the light signals that are in the photographs presented in Mr. Robinson's plan, the flashing lights, the speed humps, the idea of a potential complete street objective is in direct conflict with that small-town character and the natural beauty that the residents of Bristol seek and desire to keep. So I speak not just for myself, I speak for many people on this street, but I would ask the court to, to take the step of voting it down at this juncture, because the effort was made, and I think it was a great effort, but I think to, to put any more money into it might be considered unfruitful. And I would, in the alternative, ask that the council table this matter for a month so that we could get actual, meaningful public input into this. The people that have lived here for a long time are invested in our town, we love the people of the town, I love this town, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, I see the desire for... I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I see the desire for the visitors to want to engage in every part of the town. But it's part of the job of the town council to preserve the historic district, to preserve what the residents have indicated they desire, what has been documented in the comprehensive plan, and what the state has recognized as an important aspect of our community. So I thank you very much. And again, I would, I would ask Mr. Robinson if he could, if he would direct that question regarding a guarantee that there would be no future request for a removal of on-street parking. And, and I would further ask that if the courts, if the court, if the council is inclined to vote to go ahead on this, that it put a contingency in its decision that it's contingent on the fact that that will, there will be a prohibition for any on-street parking removal. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, Robin, give you, sorry, Arnold Robinson, my apologies. I'm going to give you a get out of jail free card or a mulligan, and I'll answer that first one because obviously that would totally be up to the council in regards to removing spaces. As part of the initial presentation and conversations leading up to this, this council has been extremely clear that we are immensely unwilling to remove parking spaces. I'm trying to be kind with my words, so a guarantee is probably too strong a word for anything, but I myself and, and my colleagues will speak soon and I don't want to go too far ahead because this is the public hearing, but I wanted to answer that one. Arnold, was there, there was a couple of questions there. If you could respond to those, I'd appreciate it.
I, I want to be careful about parsing about sort of direct questions and there's a lot of great information in Ms. McGee's comments and I, and I really am thankful she knows her plan and those other pieces in the scenic roadway designation. And I think that a couple of points that I'd offer is that the public engagement to this point has been through, you know, the sort of the, the entities we talked about and that any route schematic design that moves forward absolutely has direct outreach to all the folks who are on that route to, to the next phase of comments into that. And that was within the, the design of the RFP that the, the town put out for the process. And, and we do think absolutely it's important to canvas folks who are all along that route and get feedback. One thing I do want to note is that, while I was on the scenic roadway board when this was designated, and that's absolutely true, protecting the character is one thing we've sort of had in mind with the approach to the trees and with the approach to the scenic roadway character, which is why there's so little intervention that's sort of above the sidewalk. And complete streets was up on that slide, absolutely, but not as something we're recommending for this project at all in the first phase. And Thame Street is a shared street, is something that would be in potential second phase, but only if the town's interested in moving that forward. And so the last thing is the other piece of this, the why, the connection, you know, sort of further south, is this segment is actually in the state transportation plan for examination as part of a regional bike network. So the connection from the end of the East Bay Bike Path to the Mount Hope Bridge as a regional connector is something the state has been looking at. It's in actually the state guide plan and the state bicycle plan. That's currently in draft form, being reviewed by, by DOT. So I think those are a couple of important pieces. But absolutely, you know, getting input is, is a critical part of this process going forward. And, and that end goal is really to make that, that connection in an easy phased way first. And thank you for, for jumping in on the, your decision-making power about lanes on the street. I appreciate that. Not our call as your consultant.
Thank you, Arnold. The next was Lisa Fonseca. If you could please state your full name and address for the record. You are muted currently.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Lisa Fonseca and I live at 137 Ferry Road.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I have just a few things to comment about and Ms. McGee touched on many of them, so I don't need to repeat some of the things she spoke about. I live at 137 Ferry Road and right now, which is directly across the street from Griswold Avenue. Right now, I don't know if people are aware of the deer that we have at this end of town running and jarting out pretty much daily. I saw a couple of years ago a deer with a big rack come out of my neighbor's yard, actually, and caused quite an accident. The car hit the deer and the deer just kept running. Oftentimes, when I'm pulling out of my driveway, I have people running from either direction and, and I'm concerned about that because the speed limit is 25 miles per hour, but everybody's about 50. Nobody, nobody does the speed limit here. And also traveling north towards the Lobster Pot, that corner is, you can't see, you know, if you had a bike path on the west side road. I don't know how, it's hard enough seeing now when you're walking cars coming. I, I just, I can't see bicycle going into that mix. And again, like trash cans and all of that that she mentioned, but, but it's the, it's the deer. It's the deer that I worry about because I think that, yes, there's one sign posted outside of my driveway area, but I, I think that people that are not from this area are really not aware of. And it's, it's scary and so you have a person on a bicycle, you have a deer running out and you have a car. You know, some, someone's going to have a problem. So that's kind of really all I wanted to put my two cents in about. And thank you.
But how about me? Do I get to?
But I have a question, Mr. Cloro.
Certainly, go ahead.
My neighbor, Ginny Yanyar, is here in my kitchen with me and I don't know if she is on a list or would be able to speak, but she would like to.
She is more than welcome to. If you want to hand her the phone, she can state her full name and address for the record and make her comment.
Okay. Yes, my name is Virginia Yanyar. I live at 141 Ferry Road. I'm the neighbor of Lisa Fonseca and I also live across from Griswold Avenue. Mrs. McGee, I'm guessing she's Mrs. McGee, already, already I had many of the points that I would have said. However, I would like to point out, I've been a resident here of Ferry Road for 50 years and so I'm very, very familiar with Ferry Road in all seasons of the year and all times of the day. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned as much on Ferry Road that I would like to mention is the question that I have, if in fact there is a bike path on Ferry Road on the west side, which is where I am. Biking particularly, I'm assuming, would be greatest in the warm weather months, the late spring, the summer, and the early fall, as well as pedestrians, perhaps going up to Blythewold and so forth. But my question for the bikes is, in a situation like that, the, the driveways of most of the people in my section of Ferry Road are approximately 50 feet apart so that you have continual breaks along Ferry Road. And my question is, should there be an inordinate number of bikers? Who actually has the right of way in a situation like that? Because there are several people on Ferry Road going in and out of their driveways constantly. And as Lisa just said, in, at certain times of the year, we have a difficult time enough with the deer trying to navigate around them and never, and also traffic coming in two directions. And also, if you're going out from a west driveway and you want to go into town, you have to cross two lanes of traffic in order to get to the northern section of town. So my, one of my big questions is, should this take place? Who, in fact, has the right of way? And if we have the right of way as homeowners, then that means bicyclists will be stopping every 50 feet. That's one, that's one situation. The deer problem Lisa just, excuse me, Lisa just talked about. Another, another problem is the intersection of Ferry, Wood, and Hope Street. And that, to a certain extent, has been addressed. But we'll actually see that intersection a variety of times during the day and also of the year. It is a very, very congested area. And if you have bicyclists going along Ferry and then up Hope Street, up to the Lobster Pot, the Lobster Pot intersection itself is a very congested area. And I'm talking principally about the, again, the warmer weather months, the spring, the summer, and the early fall. It is very difficult at times of the day to even get by the Lobster Pot because of all of that. So I think all of these things have to be taken into consideration when you are looking at the, at the purple pathway there. And I realize that that is the, the least expensive of all of them, but I, I would caution people to make several trips at various points of the year and, and, and watch what happens on that road. Lisa is very correct in saying that the, the traffic limit on that road is never, never taken seriously by most groups of people, particularly coming down Hope Street. Once they round that bend from the Lobster Pot to Ferry Road, it's the Seacong Speedway. They just, they just let it rip until they get up to the, into the, to the Mount Hope Bridge. So I would caution people, particularly people who are not that familiar with this section of town to, to mull that, all of these things over because it certainly, and I do agree with the gentleman who spoke about the beauty of Ferry Road. It certainly is beautiful. And the other thing that I'd like to mention briefly is, should this path take place on Ferry Road? I would like to know exactly from the edge of Ferry Road to the many walls along people's property and so forth, exactly where the path would be. I did see a number of sketches and it looked to me, from the sketches that I saw, that the, the width of Ferry Road as it now exists is approximately 28 feet. At least that is what is indicated in the sketch. However, in order to put in a sizable bike path so that two or three bikes, two bikes particularly, and then possibly three or more are able to use that bike path, you need a wider path. I'd like to know the width of that path because it would appear to me that from Ferry Road as it exists to the properties on the west, one of which is mine and one of which is Lisa's, as long as a number of others as well, there is not sufficient land there in order to put a sizably wide bike path. So that's another one of my concerns. I'd like to know if, in fact, any of those measurements have been made and if so, how it would impact people who, who live in that particular section of town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against? The name, username is Barker. If you could please state your full name and address for the record. Hello? We can't hear you. You do look unmuted. This is, I'm calling on Barker. That's the user screen name. I'm sorry, we still can't hear you. You are currently muted. I'm going to ask you to unmute. I'm sorry, we cannot hear you. Okay, so I will come back to you. I'll give you, I do not, I see one more. I saw Mike User raise his hand, but I know that we've, I know that you had an opportunity to speak. So I'm going to hold off and try one more time with Barker. Are you there, sir? Or ma'am? Sorry. Hello? Okay. I'll come back to you one more time. I see Mike User. If you could state your name and address for the record. And I'd ask, because you've already spoken, if you could keep it brief, please. You are currently muted. Okay, so one more time, I'm going to go back to Barker. And I'm sorry, we cannot hear you. Is there anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against? Okay, so hearing no other speak against, if I could have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Chairman, Mr. Tim will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There is a motion made by Tim to close the public hearing, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. So I'd like to open up to my colleagues and ask for your input, please.
I have a.
Go ahead, Mary.
I have a, I have a few questions. And, you know, much of what I've heard, many of the concerns, I, I sort of share some of the concerns. And also, want to just flesh out a little bit more. I'm fully aware of the, you know, state plans, the bicycle plans, the pedestrian, the friend, making sure all of our roadways are friendly for all types of modes of transportation. But the one, one of the big questions that I have is, after I heard the first, you know, first presentation and thought about this for a while, I thought, isn't it like a bridge to nowhere? Because we're getting to Mount Hope Bridge. So we get this, the student traffic coming in, but are we really going to be able to connect to any other bike paths? Because the, the getting over the bridge is sort of prohibitive and it's also extremely expensive to be able to build. When they've talked about those plans, Arthur, Arnold, they've talked about those plans. It's really, really expensive to making sure no one's going to, you know, to, to put a path, whether it's underneath the bridges or how they're going to do that. So I mean, I think that is like the main question. If, if, if that was a plan and there was some looming deadline that that's going to happen, then this makes this more feasible. But right now, it's sort of, for the students and faculty at the college to come downtown, that's one thing. But as far as anybody else going back that direction from the bike path, once they get through, say, Thame Street and getting them through, whether we direct them along just Thame Street so they see all of Thame Street and up through downtown, there's really, they're going to go down there for the, sort of the, the exercise, the ride, the beautiful scenery, and then they're going to turn around and come back. They're not really going to a destination if they're going south on the bike path in this extension. So that's one of my questions. The second question is, and I know it was probably discussed at one of the earlier meetings, I just can't recall the answer. But if you're coming, if, if the majority, in my opinion, would be, the majority of the traffic would be, bike traffic would be coming from Roger Williams area going north, why wouldn't the bike path be on the east side of Ferry Road and take them right down into Wood Street? And then whether they cross over onto High Street or wherever down, down Wally, which would be a safer area than trying to go around the curve there. And I, I can't say for certain because I haven't counted, but it may be some, there may be fewer homes on that east side as well. So I'd like you to address that. And the other question I have, I'll get them all out and then I will try to be quiet. I can never guarantee that, though. And that is, when you talked about yellow flashing lights along the, I think you were saying it specifically around High Street, saying it specifically around High Street, I'd really like you to talk a little bit more about that. Because I don't really think that that's something that is needed on High Street, especially down on the, on any of the High Street, but certainly on the southern end of it. And I want to reiterate, as has been talked about on High Street, very, 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 very busy street. Roger Williams shuttle goes up and down all day long on High Street. There's lots of activity that goes on. Many people come, especially from, say, Constitution to maybe Franklin, they park here, they walk all the time, you know, from any part of town. So I just am trying, I don't, I know, I understand why you're trying to do that and get people off of 114. I don't think that's particularly safe either. But I just, I just don't know if people realize the amount of traffic that is on High Street in parts of it. And then my final comment is, I certainly don't want to see parking gone, and I don't want, I don't think any of us want to see, for those of us who are familiar with the Blackstone-Vault Boulevard project, I don't think we want to see a dedicated bike lane or two all the way through, like, on High Street. And I still don't think we want to see all of those mature trees on Ferry Road uprooted. So if you could address those as you go along, I'd really appreciate that.
Arnold?
Sure. So I've been, I'm writing down the notes, so I'll try to hit them in the order that you put them on. So the big one, it's sort of an existential one, right? The road to nowhere. It is a really good question, and one of the things that we did early on, and it's on the website, is define all the different user groups. Certainly, the university is a user group. But we also looked at the neighborhoods that are to the north of Roger Williams, that lie between Medicon and Route 114, that have no pedestrian connection to get north to Wood Street slash High Street into the grid of downtown, if you will. That's another group. And I think you're absolutely right. Right now, there are only, you know, it's, people who are very comfortable cycling will go over the Mount Hope Bridge, but most users will not. It is, it's not that kind of a bridge. And I think, you know, the question of when do you build a bike path segment? Is it only when everything's perfect, or do you build segments over time? So Diane can certainly speak to this, to sort of what the role is. You're right, right now, it's not optimal to cross the Mount Hope Bridge. Do we know what the system is going to look like? Portsmouth is right now busily looking at its pedestrian infrastructure and cycling infrastructure and making its connections. So I think that the goal has sort of been saying, there are audiences that we're going to service in the near term, but that regional connection of the, sort of like the east, the East Coast Greenway, you know, sort of this very big regional connectors for cyclists, can that work eventually over the Mount Hope Bridge? I'd say eventually, yes. Do we know when? No, is the answer.
I just left you for one moment.
Sure.
And that is, you just made a point about, you know, connecting some of the neighborhoods on the east side of Ferry Road, and a relatively small, I just lost you, sorry, relatively small neighborhood. And I know one of the big issues, and I think it was cited in your slides or somewhere else, I mean, one of the bigger issues, I would say, is safely getting people across Medicon Avenue in parts of town. So you've got all of those Fatima Drive, Lisa Lane, you know, Mason Farm, all of those areas, of people trying to access the bike path and having to cross Medicon. And would our funding be better spent to be able to do that east-west instead of this link? I mean, I understand where this has come from, and, you know, and it's sort of like the magic of if we're able to get, so you've got the student population, that's one population. They also have shuttles that run all day and all night, pretty much, that those students can do to take them to a variety of places, including downtown. And I know they use it, because I see at any given time during the day or on weekends, especially, I see like 10 kids getting off the corner of State and High at a time and walking downtown. So that's one, that's one aspect of it. But I just, you know, I just curious about that, because I was always amazed when my sister, when my nephew was young, like, maybe six, she lives in Mason Farm, they would take the bike, they would cross over and they would take their bikes down and go down Tupelo and over. And I thought, oh my God, how dangerous is that to get to the actual bike path? You know, so just wanted to raise that when you pointed out about those particular neighborhoods.
And that was in the time we had tonight for the presentation. That was a big finding, was that making those east-west cross connections. And people actually identified the streets, same, some of the same ones you did, about wanting to make that connection. Just to hit on a couple of quick questions, because I think the rest of the council will be curious about them. That curve that is at the bottom of the hill at Ferry, that right-of-way is much wider than that current grass strip is. That adjacent property owner, we believe, based on the survey data we have, has essentially put a garden out onto the state highway right-of-way. And so that curve, as you go around at the bottom, is much wider in terms of the roadway that's owned by the state, that's part of that. On the east side, the big factor really is that all, if the east side is fully populated with street trees and power poles. So that is fully populated on that side, whereas the west is much less populated by both trees, and it has very few power poles, only support poles, and they're only occasionally. There are actually more houses on the east side, in terms of driveway count, than on the west side, and street cross, and some of those cross streets, or one of those two cross streets that come out. The flashing light is not part of the design that is a sort of, hey, we know what's going to happen at that crossing of Hope and High. No light is envisioned on High Street. There's nothing that's going up. It's at that intersection, facing the traffic, as it, potentially facing the traffic as it goes both ways on Hope Street. But we really do need to study that in our schematic design phase to say, all right, given the design speeds, which are 25, and I recognize that some folks drive faster, and the stopping distances, what are the appropriate treatments for a crossing, for how you treat that? It's sort of early days, but the site distances are fairly good there, and that's an intersection we'd be studying in some detail. And I agreed with, you know, the chairman said it, and we agree with it, no parking loss on those streets, critical factor that came up in the design and the public engagement. We agree with that. And no dedicated lanes, per se, just the share row marking that says cyclists can use this space as well. And then on the roads, the reason we did the tree survey on Ferry Road was absolutely that, that reason, that mature, healthy trees should stay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold. Counsel?
Chairman, I just have a question. Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for your presentation. A lot of work went into this. I see a lot of benefits from the extension. I see economic benefits. I see environmental benefits. I see, you know, Roger Williams as a key economic benefit there, and health reasons, too. I had, I think one of the questions was answered in regards to the route, but I did have a question in regards to communication. If we do go the west route, and we do go up either Church or Constitution and down High, can you tell me a little bit about, more about how we've been reaching out to the residents to make them aware of this upcoming design, to get them more buy-in on that? Has, have they, because it looks like you've had 76 positive responses on the west route, so it seems like it was quite overwhelmingly positive on that area. But just want to make sure that the area of the residents that it's actually affecting have been communicated to.
I'm gonna, I'm probably going to pull Diane in on this as well to talk about it. I can, you know, share a little bit about what the process was. You know, for us, the, at a large scale, when we're looking at four different routes and a large swath of the southern part of town, the goal was to reach out very broadly. So it was to go through media, through the town's website, through posting the project website, so folks could be driven to that, to sort of find that, take detailed information, and then give us feedback. And the other pieces were the, those public workshops, those two public workshops, which were widely promoted. And absolutely, can you, can you reach everybody out there in the world? No. But one of the things that I think the design process has been envisioned is that you'd get to a route selection, and then when you get to schematic design, that's when you get into almost, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood discussions to get to that next phase. Diane, any additional thoughts to add in terms of, you know, you guys put together sort of the RFP thinking about the process, taking it from the macro down to the micro?
Right. No, Arnold, you said it well. And I think, you know, we looked at, this was really to get the different options on the table for possible routes, and then move forward with the one that was the most supported and the most feasible. And then, obviously, when we get into the design and the detailed plans, we will need to coordinate closely with all the properties along the road and make sure that everything is addressed, you know, accordingly. At the point where we had, you know, the four different routes, without really knowing until we got the vote from the council or the action from the council, it was sort of, I guess, not really feasible to go out and talk to people about something that may or may not happen, whereas we needed to kind of, you know, get the alignment locked down, and then we can go forward with the design.
Excellent. That answers my question. I really fine-tuned, so once we decide on the actual route, then we really be able to focus in on those residents that we need to target, get the communication out, and get, you know, make sure that they have some say and feedback, get their feedback and buy-in on that. That's great. And my second question is, the crosswalk light from High Street to Hope, could somebody just address how that would work?
Sure. So we would never imagine for a street with a road volume like Hope Street, any kind of a red signal light. What you're looking to do is to, there is already existing crosswalk at that location, and crosswalks, and so pedestrians, that is where you want pedestrians to use that. What communities will sometimes do to augment the visibility of that crosswalk is to have some kind of a vertical structure. Now, you'll see in some places, that's signage, you know, that's putting out in the middle one of those plastic things that says pedestrians have right-of-way, or pedestrians cross here. Other communities will go the next step, and they will have signs that are warning folks at a certain distance out, drivers at a certain distance out, that a pedestrian crossing point is coming up. Another stage forward on that is to have what's called a HAWK, which is an actuated flashing yellow light. It is a signal, just like a flashing caution light, that says to drivers approaching that crosswalk, that you are coming up on a crosswalk, and someone has actuated that to tell you that they're crossing, and now that yellow light is flashing. So that's a series of choices you have to make. We're not recommending that there's a right one yet. Once you make a route selection, we would look at all those options with you. We would be talking to DOT at that point as well, and we'd be looking at speeds and volumes, and saying, okay, what are our range of opportunities? What makes this the safest crossing possible, while not impeding the safety of the driving public at the same time? Because that's not, we don't want to create a condition that's like that. We want to make it safer for everyone using that zone.
And my final question is, Diane, if you could just talk a little bit to me about the timeline, and also just in regards to the cost. And we don't obviously want to have any of the taxpayers burden this cost as much as possible. Could you talk to me about that and how we're going to gain funding on this?
Yes. So as I've said all along, this is a project that is funded for design and permitting and getting shovel-ready plans. We do not have funding for implementation, and we would look for future grants, state or federal grants, to use for implementation of this project. We understand that we don't have any local funding, and we've been, you know, aware of that from the beginning. And the state has also acknowledged that, you know, they're going to keep us in mind for future potential grant opportunities as they come along. So it would not be implemented until we got the funding, which would be expected through a federal or state grant.
And timeline-wise, we're looking, we're looking at least a year out?
Yes. So the current grant that we have, which is fully funding the design permitting and construction development plans, that will expire at the end of 2021. So we're expecting that, if we move forward, we will be taking the next year to do all of the detailed plans, more public outreach, permitting, and development of the final plans. And then we will have to be in a position to see what grant opportunities are available. So I'm expecting it would not be anything before the end of, before the end of 2021 or 2022.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Chairman, Tony?
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the folks who provided comments on both ends, you know, and raised some of the concerns that they had, to obviously be addressed. This is a project that's long been discussed. I remember back when I first got into the council, this was a discussion, then as administrator. And quite a few folks reached out to me, especially when I was administrator, that when are you going to extend, you know, the sidewalk and the accessibility to Roger Williams University? As many times I walk in on my walks, I would like to change the direction. And certainly, you know, this is not just the walk, but also the bikers. You know, and I've watched, I traveled that route at least three, four times a day, actually. And one of the things that I'm very familiar with is the amount of students. Obviously, not now, but when things were well, and we were all healthy and enjoying the outdoors, and travel, you know, there were access in the school, I saw many students walking or bike riding or jogging around there. And I, you know, one of the things, I could see how difficult it was at times for them to navigate the area there. So, you know, and I'm sure that many more would do it. If, I know Councilman Perala mentioned about the shuttle, and that is true, I see the shuttle quite often. However, some of those students, I'm sure, would opt to either walk or bike ride there as well. So with that being said, I just think we may need to, to address some of the concerns. I would say that we should postpone it for one more meeting, but I'm very in favor of the bike path.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Aaron Lake.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Thank, I just want to, I'll try to keep this short. I know that this has kind of been running for a while, but I just want to say thank you to Diane and Arnold and the team over there for the incredible amount of work that you've been doing. I was able to sit in on at least a couple of the public hearings, so I was able to hear really the full range of comments for and against it. And really, today, it didn't really seem to give justice to really the amount of public input that your team had as we were, as, you know, you've been discussing this issue and planning out these four routes, and trying to figure out which one was the best optimal route in terms of, you know, the views of residents here, and the people who are bike riders, and the people who are employees of Roger Williams, and some of the neighbors, and some of the surrounding residents over there. I just, I just want to say that I'm excited about this. I've never made it a secret about my support for anything like this. I've always considered this to be a missing link from downtown to the university. I think it's always good when we can connect our largest employer with our downtown area. I think the fact that it comes over that west route, and it comes into downtown and links up the university to some of our restaurants and our makers and things like that is a very positive thing. I think also that we haven't really thought about that now we actually might not have people driving downtown and taking up parking spaces. This is actually going to free up some parking spaces if people choose to take their bikes downtown instead. We're always trying to get people active, moving around. Some of the best cities and towns that you'll ever see across the country are towns where you see people that are active, and that keeps people wanting to come back to towns that are like that. And so, again, I just want to give my support to this. I think it's, you know, but certainly, you know, we, everything needs to be buttoned up when we make decisions like this. And so, to continue hearing the public input, I think, is a positive thing. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'd like to share a couple of thoughts. We heard both support and concern, I would say, is a nice way to put that? I think the most, if not all, the comments when there was opposition wasn't to the path itself or the route, but it was probably more the route than the path. I'd like to talk just really quickly, the, we heard some feedback from the lower high street residents. One of them, actually, two of them called me today, and we've heard from others this evening, generally expressing the same concern. And I probably, like all of you or most of you, kind of weigh comments from people who are directly affected to it. Obviously, we listen to all the residents, but a resident who is directly affected by these positives or negatives, I give more weight to. So I think that the idea behind this path has a wonderful amount of merit. I think there's a lot of positives that have been expressed tonight. I personally have some concerns about the, going through the quieter neighborhood that I personally have some concerns about the, going through the quieter neighborhood that it currently is. And let's remember something, just because there isn't a sign there, doesn't mean you can't take your bike down, right? These are all public streets and anyone can go at any time. But there's a massive difference in my head when we direct, when we suggest, when we kind of corral people to go one way or another. And you take a quiet area and you can potentially make it not so quiet. So, I think it's important, and I think you've all said it, that we, I want to say that if we could continue this to our next meeting, to get some more input from those neighbors, I think it would be inappropriate, at least for me, to vote yes on this current route. But I also, let me stop and say that there's no possible way, as Arnold and Diane have also said, we can't talk to all the neighbors when we don't know the route. Now that we generally know the route that's out there, I would feel uncomfortable voting to approve it because if you're going to ask for input, you've already stated, we're going this way. And if someone is in opposition, then you say, well, that's fine, but we're going this way. I don't like that feel. So, I would rather hold off, hear from those neighbors, hear their concerns, find out if they're addressable and if not, potentially move the route. I do not think that scrapping this makes any sense. I think that we should take next steps. But I don't believe in its current form that we've addressed the concerns of the neighbors. If we can do those, then I'm in support of it. And as I said, is that if we routed a different direction, anyone on their eye, my family and I live actually, are across the street. We're on Fesser, which is right off Ferry. And we ride our bikes down Ferry, we go down Wood Street, we go down High Street, walk the dogs, we do all of that. So, I'm intimately familiar with the area. So, you can still go the direction you want to, but I think routing people into a quieter area without having greater discussion doesn't make sense. So, that's a really long way of saying, why, what's the council's pleasure? I would suggest that we continue this to our next meeting or the meeting after that. We're going into the holiday season and it could be very difficult to get some input. I'm not trying to drag it out, but I also think it's, if we're looking for input, we should give people the opportunity and not fight against COVID-19 and of course, the holiday. So, if anybody is manable to make any concerns. Mary? Can't hear you.
Okay, two quick things. Can I just ask a quick question before we do this motion?
Of course.
To Arnold, are the two quick ones, and he could address it at another time if he wants. The question that Ginny Yen-Yo raised about how wide would the bike path be on Ferry Road? Because on the schematics that you have is a relatively short, narrow path. But you're looking at a two-way, a two-lane kind of bike path. Is that kind of what you're looking at?
It is. So, you're talking about the west side of Ferry, right at Lisa and Ginny's houses? Yes. So, that would be two-way. And at this point in our discussions, it's a range. We want to do, we need to do some more stormwater and be thinking about the schematic, but we'd be thinking about anywhere between eight and 10 feet. And that right of way is wider than that. The key factors in that are you want to buffer on the roadway side for safety. It's critical to set that traffic back. And you also want to buffer off of those stone walls to maintain that pervious surface and be able to handle stormwater and have drainage. And you also want to buffer from private property. So, that is a somewhat variable zone as it goes through there, but there's plenty of room to do two lanes going back and forth that is similar to some of the configurations along the East Bay bike path. One of the things Diane brought out, and maybe this is a good thing to do, is we can do some mockups in the field. You know, we could put stakes out and folks can understand exactly what this looks like. You know, we can take a little bit of biodegradable spray paint and spray paint that out and you can see how it goes around a tree and how it handles a corner. Those are all great things to do so people can visually see it in the landscape within obviously COVID restrictions, you know, that we need to have. But we could do that and then post it on the website and tell people, hey, go out and walk it.
I think that would be a great idea, actually, to be, to really see that, especially with, you know, that sort of rural character of that roadway and the walls and all of that. And the other question that you made reference to but didn't really ask, when I asked you about the flashing lights, and to be honest with you, something around that lobster pot corner, whether we have a bike path or not would be, or a bike roadway could probably be much, much needed. But you had mentioned that the four-way stops, that there are ways at the stop signs to get the bicyclists to pay attention as well. I mean, depending on whether you go down Constitution or Church, you're going to hit at least, well, Union and Constitution and then maybe Church, you'll hit like three four-way stops. So, I was very happy to hear that you all acknowledge that the cyclists sometimes are the worst offenders of stopping and not stopping and not following any rules of the road. And if you could, could you talk a little bit about what those mechanisms may be or tools that you would use to get people to stop? Are they just stop signs that are lower down? I mean, what is it that you would be using on High Street, for example?
I think what I can do is I can give you like a 15-second response and then I can post things on the website that actually show those enhanced intersections. And so, it is that you are both using language that is specific to that cycling public and also the walking public who's using the crosswalks. And what you paint and the width of that and even how you treat pavement sometimes makes a difference in how people behave and how they slow down when they come to those intersections. Got some great images that show what Annapolis has done with their intersections that I can share on the website that show you how that's, all users slow down for those intersections.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, I'm happy to make a motion that we put this off and revisit this at the last meeting in January. And it is true, I think we have our reorganizational meeting in early December and then just one meeting in December. And so, to get it outside of the holidays and hopefully have everything else calm down a little bit. Maybe we'd even be in person, who knows?
I'd like to go across this.
So, I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. There was a motion made by Mary to continue this with, of course, looking for input from the public on those affected areas and also the public in general, of course. And that was seconded by Tony. So, we will go to our last meeting in January. Any discussion?
I just want to, Arnold, so you would be putting out this, like these schematics and the spray paint and whatever soon, like before it got too much into the winter, do you think?
Oh, yeah. I mean, so I think that if you're heading for sort of a January meeting, we obviously want it to be clear ground where you can see things. So, I'll talk with Diane about what we can do that. But the great thing about the website and having a thousand people participated is we have this network of folks who are paying attention. And so, we can post that, you can post it on the town website. We'll also put up photos. So, for folks who maybe don't want to go out there in the cold and look at it, they'll be able to see it and see those images. So, I think that's something, we have to talk about it, but I think that's something we can do during December.
Well, I do think some of the people that live on High Street may not be as involved with either social media or, you know, looking at the website on this project because they may not even be that familiar with it. So, we just want to make sure that maybe you do like a quick little, you know, leafleting or something of some of those houses. Might be worth it if all this is on the website and we actually have a visual.
Who's that? Tim, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say Mary's like mentioning like almost like a little campaign, just to get the word out.
Yeah, I guess so that they know to look at and to look at the website and where it is.
I was going to say the same thing, is if we could take extra effort in this instance to make sure that we're engaging all that, everyone is affected, but there's a particular, a higher effect rate to the people who live in the vicinity. So, okay. Anything else? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. And let me just take one more moment and say, thank you for your efforts. Arnold, thank you for your efforts. Diane?
Definitely. Thank you.
And I just want to thank the council and also everybody who's participated. It's been, it's been a wonderful process. So, I want to thank everybody too. Thank you.
So, thank you. Before we, thank you all. So, we're going to move to a next agenda item, which I'm going to ask for a motion to add an agenda item right now. And that agenda item would be for discussion purposes only. The, and it is to talk, I'd like the administrator to update this council and of course, the community on some steps that we're going to take in regards to the announcement that we're probably hearing from the governor tomorrow. Mike, are you comfortable with the way I just worded that?
Yes, you absolutely can add it to the agenda. Yes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of that effect?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
So, Tim made the motion, Mary seconded it to add this for discussion purposes only. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I'll also vote aye. Motion carries. So, I'm going to ask the administrator, we spoke a little bit earlier today. As some of you may know, the governor's announcing tomorrow probably some additional restrictions. And Bristol has been very much not in response, or excuse me, not reaction, but in a response mode. So, we don't wait for these things to happen. We have systems in place. You've done an excellent job, but the administrator wanted to point out some steps that we're going to take moving forward. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Chairman. So, we're waiting on the governor's press conference tonight to see what additional guidance we're going to get from the state and the Department of Health. I did meet with all of our department heads today and I've asked for suggestions on how to preserve the health and the safety of our departments so that we can continue on our mission of trash pickup and police services, fire services. I will say, within the last approximate week, Bristol has had a little over 100 positive cases. So, that's quite a big increase considering we have 557 positive cases in Bristol since this pandemic started. So, I will say that it, as we all know, COVID is here in Bristol. It's in the community and so we have to make some changes. I don't see us closing Town Hall. We've made some very good improvements here to protect our employees and to keep the public safe. We'd like to keep open, but I think you're going to find that our scheduling is going to change. There'll be more work being done from home. Programming, we're taking a look at recreation and also the library, the free browsing and so forth is going to have to be scaled back. But saying all that, I do have something, I don't want to be premature, but I will say in a positive note, I think we all need our spirits lifted. The fire chief has been communicating with the Department of Health on making Bristol one of the points of distribution for the vaccine. So, the good news is the vaccine is in the works and communications have come to Bristol directly with the fire chief. And so, I think we're going to keep optimistic. We're going to make the changes that we need to make to continue to operate and contain, contain this potential spread. There are town employees that have tested positive. One is currently hospitalized. And I ask that you all consider saying a prayer and keep thinking of that person, but he's doing well right now. So, that's all I have right now and I'll put more out to the departments. And nothing too significant that I can see unless the guidance that's delivered by the governor tomorrow tells us that we really have to change things drastically. But we'll know more Friday, late Friday morning, there'll be the next directive out to the departments. That's all I have.
So, if you are watching right now or will be watching, if you're, if you have an appointment with someone at Town Hall or one of our town departments, it probably makes a lot of sense to call ahead to make sure that it's still a functioning appointment. And also just any questions that you have, obviously all of this will be listed on the website. It's, the website is actually an outstanding place to find out what's going on at the moment. And if you can't find that information or you just prefer to call Town Hall, you can of course do that too. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Mr. Solicitor, could you help me with the motion to close this? Is the receiving file you helped me with? I want to make sure that we follow up in meeting order.
Actually, no votes necessary at all.
Thank you. That's easy. Great. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The next item on this evening's agenda is the first item in your ordinance section. This is the ordinance 2020-08. This was to consider certain amendments to the industrial pre-treatment program fees. And you have correspondence from the pre-treatment coordinator, Mr. Conway, suggesting that the ordinance should be put aside at this time.
So, I had dialogue with the administrator a little bit earlier. I'm going to ask him if he wouldn't mind just sharing some quick information on this. But I'll remind everyone that this was a proactive approach by the town to lessen the cost to businesses, specifically breweries is what this was. And the idea behind it was that they are not necessarily a high-impact user of the sewer. And we didn't seem to think that it made sense for them to test as much as a high-impact user would normally. As you recall from our last meeting, we had some last-minute correspondence from DEM and we held off making any action, well, taking any action on this. Since that point, DEM has been very clear to say that they would not approve this. So, we're not going to be able to move forward with this. I'm not trying to make DEM the bad guy in any way, shape or form. This was us trying to lessen costs to businesses, business-friendly actions. But it's not going to happen at this point in time. And we will certainly keep our eye on DEM. They will be continuing to share guidance. And if there's an opportunity to augment, change, lessen, then certainly this council will of course consider it again. Did I just cover everything, Mr. Administrator? I'm sorry. So, okay. All right. All right. So, we just need a motion to receive and file.
Actually.
I'm sorry. We need a motion to reject, correct?
Well, how about a motion to withdraw?
Thank you.
A motion to withdraw the ordinance. It's motion, so speaking.
So, I heard the motion made by Tim to withdraw?
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council is ordinance 2020-09. And this is to amend the town code to allow for an adjustment in the number of intoxicating beverage licenses.
This is a first reading.
It is the first reading, yes. Motion to approve first reading, Tim?
Second. Tony?
Motion made by Tim to approve first reading, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion carries.
The next item is item C3. This is the first reading of ordinance 2020-10. And this is to create a no-parking area on Prospect Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve first reading.
Tim, second.
Motion made by Tony to approve first reading, seconded by Tim. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
So, vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item is ordinance, the first reading, excuse me, of ordinance 2020-11. And this has to do with tax exemptions.
This is a first reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve first reading.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony to approve first reading, seconded by Mary. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. It's important to emphasize that this is another way to help small businesses, especially if they under $10,000, you know, to waive the tangible tax.
That's a great point, Tony, is that this actually affects in Bristol 400 of our small businesses. This is of course first reading, so we'll have more discussion in second reading. I just saw our economic development coordinator turn on his camera, so you must want to share something. But this is an opportunity, you, as you all recall, there was a lot of efforts and energies put into this, including by Chris Vitale and the administrator and of course, the tax assessor too. This is an outstanding thing for us to be able to accomplish. We were talking about kindness and reflection on small businesses, making their days easier so they're not doing paperwork. The effect to the town is a loss of revenue of $18,500. But in fact, I don't think that's actually true. That may be the revenue loss, but the efforts and energies, I think, well outweighs that. And I know it certainly does for 400 businesses. But, Chrissy, turn the camera on. Did you want to share something? No? Okay.
No, no, nothing from me. Just, it gets to any questions, but you got the highlights covered. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
So, vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is item C5. And this is the first reading and call for a public hearing to be held on December 30th or thereabouts on the comprehensive zoning code and map revision for this current year.
So, Mr. Clerk and Mr. Solicitor, I, I would love, this is obviously first reading and call for a hearing. I would like to potentially with council approval, maybe set a special council meeting to, to specifically go through this. This is, this is a lot of information. It's good information. There's a lot of large changes and there's, there's much more small changes. How would we do that, approve first reading and then potentially, and schedule with the clerk's department a special meeting potentially in January?
So you can approve this for first reading this evening. Then you could have the clerk schedule with all of you a date that works well. And as long as that date on an agenda is published 48 hours in advance and we go through the appropriate advertising period, you can do it that way.
Okay. So help us with that motion, please.
So the motion would be to approve the ordinance for first reading and it need go no further because you don't actually have to set the date tonight for the second reading.
Okay.
You can just ask the clerk to send a poll around for dates in December when you're all available.
Okay.
I'll move.
Okay. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Is there any discussion? So I will work with the clerk and the department to schedule something. I'm thinking January just again for the reasons talked about earlier with the holidays coming. So, okay. So motion is seconded. No other discussion? Tim? Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is a license request from Sandy Anderson doing business as Waves Wellness 190 High Street. Request counsel consideration for a holiday sales license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator and fire chief and also a late item recommendation from the police chief and also the town administrator.
Based on no recommendations, I move that we approve it.
Second.
A motion to approve made by Tony, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item E one and this, oh, I'm sorry, we did that one already, didn't we?
No.
Okay.
Bye.
We did that in the beginning. So now we have E two, and this is the Sunday sales license renewals, this is for package stores. You have a recommendation provided by the town administrator and fire chief and a late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police.
Mr. Chairman, based on all the positive recommendations, I move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
The next item is item E three, and this is for the vidling license renewals for 2020, 2021. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator and fire chief and also late item recommendations from the town administrator and chief of police.
Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve the vidling license renewals for 2021.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to approve, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Item E four, the additional hours license renewals for 2020, 21. And you have late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police.
Based on the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve the additional hour, hours license renewals for 2020, 2021.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to approve, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, just a clarification. Is this an extension to extend the hours or this is the current operation?
These are current hours and it requires annual approval for those extended hours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
Item E five is for the amusement device licenses for 2020, 21. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator and fire chief and also laid item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police.
Mr. Chairman, based on the positive recommendations, I move that we, I move that we approve it.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Tim. Is there any discussion? I wonder if you could play the tape back and just plug in the same thing every time. All right. Is there any other discussion? No, we can't.
We have combined all of them. No, we cannot.
Hearing no other discussion. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. And item E six for holiday sales license renewals. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator and fire chief and a late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police.
Based on the positive recommendations, I move that we approve it.
Oh, second the motion. Good timing, right on.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Yes, it feels like we've done this before. Is there any discussion?
Just very briefly, an observation. I mean, it's good that we can say it's all positive recommendations, you know, obviously because our business, that's the last thing they need is to have hiccups. So it's nice to see that they're doing well and that we can support them.
Well said. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
And the final one in the bunch, junk and secondhand license renewals for 2020, 21. You have later on recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police.
And Mary, oh.
Yeah, Mary. Mary, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was, I was looking at the list. Am I seconding it?
You're going to motion to-
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Excellent.
Aaron's seconded, right, Aaron?
Aaron's seconded. Thank you, Aaron. So we have a motion by Mary, seconded by Aaron to approve. Any discussion?
A little bit of spirit in there.
Exactly. Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is the first item in your petition section. This is the, considers the petition of Lisa Caden, 40 Cottage Street, regarding parking on Cottage Street. You have a recommendation provided by the town administrator and the acting Department of Public Works Director and also a late item recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police.
Mr. Administrator, I'm just going to ask that you just give some clarity here. I know that you and I have spoken in regards to this. Just remind everyone that Cottage Street is being paved right now. It's a couple, I know Tony is, that's, that's his street, right? Or one of, one of the people that live there.
Very much appreciated. Yes.
There's currently a space here that is in question that is 24 feet in length. Typically a parking space is 18. And it's my understanding, and I'm going to ask the administrator if you could give us some clarity, is that it's, that's pretty much a space and a half. And sometimes there are two cars parking in a space and a half, which is causing some challenge for some driveways. If I have that right, Mr. Administrator? Can't hear you, sorry.
It is, it's 24 feet of parking. So if we expand the driveway, no parking box, six feet, that'll leave us with one 18-foot parking space. So I don't believe an ordinance is required here. I think it's just an expansion of the driveway, no parking box, which is across the street from the petitioner. So we can handle this through DPW. If not, you're going to have to pass an ordinance for a six-foot no parking space, which is, I've never seen that before.
Seems silly and especially that there's, it's not paved currently. So, so the new painting and paving could handle that. And Mr. Solicitor, Mr. Clerk, do you agree with that synopsis?
Yes. Yes.
So a receiving file would be appropriate and include the, the conversation that happened here?
That it will be, that it will be striped upon the completion of the road project.
Perfect. Right. I address my question.
So could we have a motion to receive and file include, and have it include the dialogue that was just here?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to receive and file based on the dialogue we've had.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to receive and file, seconded by Tony. With all that clarity there, any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Just, just briefly, a point of clarification. No, it's not across from, it's not my driveway and it's not my neighbor. But it is, well, it is one of the neighbors in the street, but not my, my road. I mean, my driveway.
Fair enough.
Cottage Street was long overdue for a rebuild. So, yeah, we're, we'll, eventually we'll get to all of them. Might take, might take a lifetime, but we'll get there.
It's kind of like how you paint the inside of your house. When you're done with, you have to start all over again, right? So, okay. All right. So no other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Item F two, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is the petition of Kristen McCall, 33 Center Street, regarding no parking spaces and signage on State at Center Street. You have a late item recommendation provided by the town administrator and chief of police and also a late item recommendation from the acting Department of Public Works Director.
So this may also be a very, well, a similar no action, but still steps being taken to remedy the situation. I'm going to ask the, if you would, Mr. Administrator to weigh in on this one also.
So in this case, Center Street exiting southbound onto State Street, either left turn, hand turn or right-hand turn, there was a sight of dish, sight of vision issue, sight of distance vision issue. So the petitioner is asking for several no parking boxes. I'm in agreement with the police department's recommendation that typically there is no parking 15 feet from a corner. I suggest that we have DPW mark 15 feet from a corner, no parking on both sides. That should help with the, the visual clearance as, as, as you exit Center Street. So no, again, no, no ordinance should be necessary for no parking. It's a standard that there's no, there's no parking 15 feet from a corner. That's something that the police department does enforce. So we'll mark, DPW can, my recommendation would be that we have DPW mark 15 feet from, from the corner of Center Street on the west and east side of the intersection. No parking.
So, Mr. Chairman, could we make a motion then to refer this to the administrator and DPW to address it as needed?
As, as presented? Yeah. I think, or as needed is even better because it gives a little flexibility if it's 14.78 inches and whatever the heck it is. Just why get specific, right? So I, I love that idea. Go ahead.
Okay. So I make the motion to refer this matter to the administrator and DPW director.
Is there a second? Okay. There's a motion and a second to refer to the administrator and DPW director. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
And the final petition considers the request of Richard, Richard Anania of 18 Rock Street, who was requesting an accessible parking space in front of his residence. This was considered for first reading. You do have late item recommendations from the town administrator and the acting DPW directed to deny the request.
Could you speak to us? Typically, this is, this comes to us most of the time with a recommendation for approval or at least augmented approval. Could you talk to us just for the record of why it's being suggested we deny? Mr. Administrator, sorry.
I believe I concurred with the DPW, not DPW, the police, the police investigation. I don't believe it was the DPW. The police department, they looked at it. The homeowner has a parking space in the garage and also one, also one in the driveway. And so they felt as if it is a two-family home. If they decide to rent the second floor, they would have to have that person park on the street or give up one of their parking spaces and they'd still be able to retain one handicap space. So that was the recommendation of the police department. I concurred with it.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Chief, did you want to weigh in on that at all or?
I believe the administrator has a correction.
Perfect. Okay. What's this council's pleasure?
Tim, I make a motion to deny the, or reject the first reading.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to deny, seconded by Tony. Discussion?
Yes, just very briefly. I'm glad that they came back with the denial because that street is a pretty narrow street and the parking is very limited on that street. So, you know, in reading the communication from the chief, it certainly is very clear that there is ample space and not a need to take up any additional space on the street.
So I think this speaks also to our earlier conversation talking about the bike path and our ultra sensitivity to parking or lack thereof, lack thereof. I also think it's very fair to say that this council has approved the majority of the handicap parking spaces when requested when, when the need was there or the need was deemed to be there. So I think it's important to just to, to say that is that parking is very, very, very scarce. In some locations, this is one of them. So, okay. So we had a motion made by Tim to deny, seconded by Tony. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is the first item under your appointment section. This is for Conservation Commission reappointments with term to expire in December of 2023. You have Glenn Donovan of Tuligo Avenue and Anthony Martini of 46 Highland Road, current, both currently serving, both seeking reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the reappointment of both candidates.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint both candidates. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
Next item is the Juvenile Hearing Board with term to expire in December of 2023. You have the request of Matthew P. Cabral, 5 Polk Court, currently serving, wished to be reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, Tim?
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to reappoint Matthew Cabral.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to reappoint. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
Item G one C is the Mount Hope Trust, the town's representative to that board, with term to expire in December of 2022. You have Susan C. Maloney of 72 Griswold Avenue, currently serving, wishes to be reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the reappointment.
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
The next is item G one D. This is for the Bristol Christmas Festival Committee. You have three new applicants, all recommended by the chairman, Jennifer Anderson of 78 State Street, David Scarpino of 392 Hope Street, and Laura Scarpino of three, excuse me, 932 Hope Street. All, again, all recommended for appointment by the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve all three appointments.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve all three appointments. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
And finally, we have G one E. This is for Rogers Street Library Board of Trustees. You have a recommendation from, from the chairman of the Board of Trustees, Elizabeth Brito, to appoint Laura A. Cabral.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Laura Cabral to the, to the board.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to appoint. Any discussion?
Yes. Just a note that Mrs. Brito did point out- Uh, yes, just a note that, uh, Mrs. Brito did point out that there is a, a feel of candidates and she was selected amongst them, from amongst them.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. This is the point where, um, for all of us, I thank the volunteerism that we constantly see in this town. And I'd also like to point out to this council and to the community that you'll notice there are two husband and wives on, uh, a couple of different boards here, Scarpinos and the Cabrals. So, um, volunteerism apparently runs in their family and they're not alone with that. There's a lot of that.
A lot of it.
So, but I want to thank all of, uh, the boards and commissions for the hard work and effort. And this, what we're doing right now on Zoom is so difficult. It's clunky, it's, it's challenging sometimes to get the feel of your colleagues and where they're coming from just by looking at your face and listening. So, all of our boards and commissions are going through the same challenges. Um, but yet they continue to do so, um, and being accessible to the public. So the public can continue doing what they want to do, whether it's zoning board or HTC or planning or enjoying the Christmas festival, right? There are so many things that make Bristol beautiful and this is a huge part of it. So, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. The next item on the agenda, agenda is item I one. And this is an item provided by Councilwoman Perella regarding a new resident portal.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we, you know, we've heard a lot about, you know, of being a more welcoming community and so forth, which I think are pretty welcoming. But I had come across in one of our, uh, in something I was reading, um, this idea of a new resident, resident portal where people would have all this information, but be, and I thought, well, that's a great idea for, for Bristol. Um, but then when I went to kind of research a little bit on our, on our website, um, a lot of it is there, but it's not summarized in a simple area. And, and I think sometimes, um, even, you don't have to be a new resident to Bristol. Sometimes we're just looking for a quick little blurb on something that we can able to be able to talk about. So I thought it would be helpful if we could put together, we can call it a new resident, resident portal, we could call it something else. Um, but it would give a very brief overview of the history of Bristol, um, voter, voter, um, voter, uh, information, um, emergency services, schools, recreation, et cetera. And then I was just trying to give you a sense of what it would be, what I sort of was envisioning. So I just took a couple of them, but it was like not, it wasn't even easy to find, just these simple little pieces of information in one place. And that's just like Parks and Rec and just a little bit about what it offers. And then here's, here's the link right here, taking the Parks and Rec, um, the, taking the King Philip Little League, even though that's like outside of us, but that's stuff that people would be looking for. Um, emergency services, if people wanted to get involved, what we, what we do, the fact that we are a volunteer. It goes back to eighteen thirty-six, you know, those, that kind of stuff. Um, so I didn't, if I had the time, I probably would have done all the departments and it would have been done. But I didn't have the time that particular day. Um, and I was thinking also, that would be a great project for Lou Sharillo in his retirement, but, um, I
Lou, move.
I don't think I want to hear your job, but I, I think I sent that to him to email. But I don't know, Chris, I know that you're always refining, um, the, uh, the website. And I think this is a good, I don't, if I do say so myself, I think it's a good idea to be able to put a summary of the community and of each of these departments along these lines, uh, in there. And, um, so I don't know if I should just refer this to the administrator, but I do think it's something that we should take a look at and, and, and do, because I think it'd be very helpful for everybody, um, actually.
Mary, I think it's an outstanding idea. I think it's when, when you can get a gist of your basic, um, high traffic areas, whether, how do I get a new trash, well, how do I get a trash can? I'm new to town, right? Like one, where's the one that's supposed to be here, uh, those kinds of things. I think it's, it's an outstanding way of making this welcoming community even more welcoming.
Yeah. And I think, you know, one of the things, like even, um, because I have a, I have a hard time every single one of our meetings, just finding our, our, um, Zoom link. And it's not like I don't ever Zoom link, ever do Zoom, I do it all the time. But, you know, it either comes up in my, um, my calendar as a reminder or, you know, whatever. So I always have to go hunting for it a little bit. And to me, it should just be right on the, like, if there's a meeting coming up, it should be right there. Like, here's the link for the meeting for tonight, for the town council. And so, I mean, this is the only one that I have a hard time getting to. So this is just my thoughts on what it should be like. Uh, I would like to move that we refer this to the administrator and to Chris Vitale, um, and, uh, to, um, to look at and to maybe come back with a, with a plan. I think it would be relatively simple. I'm not trying to put work on the department, on your department, uh, Steve, but it's relatively simple little thing that people could just write up pretty quickly. Um, and I think it would be very helpful.
And I heard that as a motion, Mary?
Yes, it was.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There are a motion made by Mary to refer to the administrator and economic development director, um, to work on this project, seconded by Tim. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lee.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, I think this is a great idea, uh, Councilwoman Perella. I think that, and I, and I speak as somebody who has moved here in the last, you know, six years and has had to move around to a lot of different places, uh, around the country. Uh, yeah, I've lived a very nomadic life, uh, you can say. But when I, when I came here, you know, I've set, I settled down a little bit. I had a family, you know, we had, um, a lot of, um, you know, things that we had to think about as homeowners. And, you know, just think about something as simple as like, when you move here, you have to get your dog registered. Like, that's not something that a lot of people know about. And I'm, I'm not necessarily, I, I don't know if the web page articulates that, but like, there are certain things that make us maybe a little bit, um, different than some other places where, where people may have lived. And so, so I think that's great. Um, I think it's great that, you know, there was a couple of ways of interpreting this. A portal as a website, but I thought it, you may have solved the, uh, issue of time travel. And there was actually a portal for new residents to actually get here to Bristol. And so I think either idea would have been a great one, Councilwoman.
I mean, when we look at our webs, the website, like seriously, when I, thank you, when I went on there, it was, I thought, well, maybe we don't need it because you have all these departments already laid out. But what you don't have is a lot of the departments that, you have a lot of like, how to pay your taxes, how to do this, how to do that, zoning requests, things like those, those things. But we just want to know how to register your child for summer camp, you know? And, uh, and like you said, I, I don't know if I put it in here or not, but I had, you know, thought about the, the animal license, the, the dog licenses, thing like that, um, and DPW, exactly what Nathan had, the chairman had said, you know? Here's how, here's the link, here's who you call, here's the phone number, click easy, handy. Um, because I'm not sure what, what the trash is, like, you know, like, that we recycle, we do both recycling, automatic recycling and trash every single week, you know, that type of thing. Cause that's different in every place as well. So, thank you. Um, so that, that's that.
Chris?
Devol, oh, Chris.
Um, yeah, it was from my point of view, yeah, I'm happy to do that and always looking to make the website more user friendly. Um, I just think this is also a good opportunity to say for people who are watching this, if you are navigating the website and you have a suggestion, we have a dedicated email address, webmaster@bristolri.gov. So we will continue to make some updates to the website, but if members of the public have their own suggestions, send them our way. We always want to try and improve our messaging.
Chris, is that, um, email address, um, on the front of the site? Or where would somebody find that if they don't remember that?
We'll make sure that that's prominent.
See what we just did there? See, we already improved it. Excellent. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony? I didn't hear you, Tony.
No, no, you want to hear me.
Now you are. Okay. I heard an aye from that. Mary?
Aye.
And Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. It's a great idea.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council is item I two. And this is notice from the Coastal Resources Management Council regarding a, um, particular Bristol project with a deadline for comments before December sixth. You have recommendation provided by the harbor master.
Uh, Chairman, it's any positive recommendations from harbor master, no objections. Uh, make a motion to receive and file. Do we accept?
Do a second?
Would that be the proper motion? I, I, I know, I was in question as to how we should move this item. You know, is, would that be the correct, uh, thing to do, Mike? Or, or Lou?
Ordinarily, that, you know, we don't have very many of these that are from, from Bristol. Uh, but if the council doesn't wish to have any additional comments, then receiving file is perfectly fine.
Second.
Motion made by Tim to receive and file, seconded by Tony. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next is item I four. It's a similar request for a project on Portside Drive, uh, with a, a little slightly earlier deadline for comments. And you have another recommendation provided by the harbor master.
I move that we, uh, have received and file.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim?
Yep.
Any other, uh, discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper, the Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority.
Motion to receive and file, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, second with some comments.
Go ahead.
Well, some observations. Uh, one of the things that I'm reading through is that they would like to go from a quarterly billing to a monthly billing. So it's important that our residents are aware of that. They're going forward into the future. Uh, they're not going to get a quarterly, but read a monthly bill just like they get the, uh, electric, gas and all others. So it's important. Also, um, the, uh, they're in the process of, uh, doing a search for a new executive director, uh, combination of director and chief engineering. And, uh, obviously, you know, I'm sure they will not have a big impact in, in the customer service, but certainly on the leadership of the, uh, the water authority. Uh, in last but not least, the removal of the upper, uh, upper Kikamure, uh, the dam. At the, uh, so certainly, you know, uh, interesting projects going on in, uh, our dollars for the years.
I'm, Tony, I'm glad that you brought that up and, and with the council approval, maybe we could ask the clerk to reach out to our directors. Um, it's been a while since we've heard an update and, and there's a lot going on right now. I know some, and certainly myself, and I know others have had some serious concerns about giving up our water supply. Um, and with the continued changes with where we get the water from, not that it's bad, but the less and less control that we have, the more and more we're subject to rate increases, such and so forth. And certainly keeping our own water doesn't keep us from having rate increases. But when it's yours, it's yours. So, but thank you for pointing out the monthly bill. Uh, and Lou, could you reach out to, and maybe we can get them on, um, invite them to our December thirtieth meeting? That would seem appropriate and through Zoom, of course, and ask for an update. This is a lot. So maybe just give us some feedback on this and anything else that they believe that the public should hear in course in the council too.
Absolutely, sir. Very good suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, if it's appropriate, I, uh, I must forgot, could we add something for discussion purposes only?
Sure.
Um, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work of our, um,
That's before you do. Could you make a motion to that effect?
Oh, I'm making a motion, yes.
I'll second.
And that motion is to recognize, uh, a colleague's hard work. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's what I heard. And I heard the second, um, uh, any discussion? To, Tim?
Absolutely, aye.
Tony?
Yes.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Go ahead, Mary.
No, go ahead.
No, no. Okay. All right.
And then we'll all speak.
Yes, we will. So I'm going to just move my camera a little bit and I'll, Lou is in the other room. So he's going to see this shortly, uh, and we'll get back to this just in a moment. And I'm going to just do one more thing here. This, um, you've seen one of these, Lou, more than maybe hundreds of thousands. It's a proclamation. And typically, as you probably know, I don't read all of these, but I got to tell you something. You, we are going to read this, this evening. And if you bear with me, if I stumble a few words here and there. Um, I'd like to recognize, uh, a few people that put some hard work into this. Um, Melanie Wolf, uh, the Deputy Clerk, put a lot of effort in and her name is on the bottom of this. Uh, and Diane Maderas, you may be familiar with that name, used to be the town administrator. And before that, she was the clerk. Typically, the clerk, uh, Lou Sharillo would, would do these proclamations. I just didn't think it was appropriate to have him do his own proclamation. So, uh, Diane Maderas, thank you for your hard work and effort. And you'll hear, um, why she was such an excellent clerk and why she speaks and how she speaks about this excellent clerk. Lou Sharillo, Bristol's, uh, Bristol's irrever, see, she gets, she goes, throws the, right the first couple of words, right? Irrepressible town clerk for the past sixteen years has distinguished himself as one of the hardest working public servants ever to grace the offices of Bristol's municipal government. And the rest of these words are going to say Lou Sharillo. I'm just going to say Lou to move it along. Okay? Um, ever to grace the offices of the Bristol's municipal government. And Lou has held the, uh, elective office for much of his adult life as a member of the school committee, the town council and our town clerk, immersing himself in Bristol's governance since the nineteen eighties. A testament to his reverence and for his importance of holding elected office. And Lou's love for the commitment and his commitment to his community are obvious to anyone who has seen him at work. He gives his all to every task at hand. His reverence for the office he holds is also obvious. Lou has zealously guarded a nonpartisan nature of the town clerk's position while highlighting and strengthening the office's place as the heart of local government. And in addition to being respected and admired by Bristol's elected officials, apparently he is, right? Um, over the past years of service, Lou is respected and admired by statewide, sorry, statewide by town and city clerks from all over Rhode Island. Having been elected by his peers as president of the Rhode Island Town and Cities Clerk Association from September twenty sixteen through September twenty eighteen, Lou has been much-loved purveyor of good counsel and assistance to any of his fellow clerks with a good sense to avail themselves of his wisdom. And Lou, willingness to listen to his constituents, coworkers and anyone for that matter with a question or concern and his desire to help others regardless of how much time was necessary to get to the job, get the job done, were attributes that set him apart from those who simply worked hard. Lou Sharillo worked ceaselessly, uh, as apparently there was no clock in his office. I like that. That was good. Uh, Lou, gentleman, Bristol scholar and scribe of Bristol's history, the very face of Bristol town government, is retiring on December seventh, twenty twenty, finishing up his job that he loved and is living and, and has lived for sixteen years. The residents of Bristol will be forever grateful for his years of honorable service and his devotion to his communities. We're almost done. Therefore, let it be resolved that the honorable town council and the honorable town administrator of the town of Bristol, state of Rhode Island, by virtue of the authority vested in them by the citizens of Bristol, extend to Louis P. Lou Sharillo heartfelt thanks for his service to Bristol and further sends thanks and best wishes and regards to his family and friends who unselfishly shared him with us during his service, especially his wife, Susan, um, who will now get to enjoy much more time with our soon-to-be-retired but never-forgotten town clerk, Lou Sharillo. And this is signed by the administrator, Steve Contenti, myself, Tim Sweeney, vice chair, Antonio Taxara, councilman, Mary Perella, councilman, Aaron Lee, councilman, and as I said, Nelly, Melanie Wolf, the, uh, Deputy Clerk. Lou, that was worth reading all of that. Diane, that was outstanding. Um, and I'm going to open it up to my colleagues and thank you. Colleagues?
I'm going to miss you, Lou.
I'll, I'll go, I'll go because I've probably been involved with Lou the longest in political world. world, forever and a day. I mean, I've always, you know, we've, I've always known Lou and his family and um, probably when he was back on the school committee and then when I, he was already on the council when I first ran, I was trying to do a little research myself as to when you first got involved. I think it was nineteen eighty-two if I remember, if I read correctly. And uh, if I, if I remember. And um, shortly went on to the council and then I was, then I joined him in a few, a year, a term or two later. Um, and we sort of together for a few years. And then when I heard uh, Lou was running for, oh, he did an outstanding job. When I heard he was running for this particular uh, town clerk's position, I actually couldn't think of a ma- of, of some, of a marriage made, a, a sort of a marriage made in heaven. I mean, Lou, if you don't know, he's always been involved, I, you know, with the history of Bristol. Um, I think even way back, um, he's not much older than I am, but a little bit older and a few years. And I think, weren't you around with, with Lombard when we were doing some of that stuff at the hi- um, the high school and taking us on historic tours through downtown, as you're still doing with the kids now? And um, you know, so he had the history, he had, you know, the writing, he had written for what was called, it's called the bay now. I can't remember what it was called then, but um, and uh, you know, his work at Linden Place and all these other, and then of course his management position at his, at his real job, his regular job at Dixon. And he's putting all that together in the town clerk's role, which was so amazing because it's such a diverse um, position where you have to worry about the history and the preservation of records. You have to, you have to like to write because what Diane just wrote, what Lou has written so many times, uh, is amazing. Um, you have to be able to manage all these licenses and there's just so much to the job and you've done it so extremely well. Uh, we're gonna miss you a great deal. You're very thorough, very detail oriented. And I just want to personally thank you for everything uh, over the years that you have done and contributed to Bristol. And uh, we just wanted to give you like, we didn't want to let your last official council meeting with this council go by, um, without recognizing uh, your, your efforts and thanking you on behalf of a very grateful community. So, uh, and the one thing I would say that Diane Mediris did a fabulous job, but she left out that word that Lou loves, but none of us could ever pronounce that, felicitatious or whatever it's called. How do you say that word again, Lou? Like, you...
You said it exactly right, Councilwoman.
I never have.
Practice.
I never have.
So, thank you, Lou. That's...
So, anyone else?
Uh, I just wanna say, back in twenty twelve, when you were green as a new councilman or councilwoman, there was no training for this job at all. And I came on board and I freaked out at my first ordinance because I was like, oh my God, I see so many issues. I don't know what I'm gonna do. And I would never, I'll never forget it. Lou said, Tim, ordinances are like a bite out of an apple. And you take one bite and then you take another bite and then you get to the whole of it and we get to it together. And it's always stuck with me through all my years. Uh, it's because that bite of the apple, Lou, it's always gonna remember, I'm always gonna remember you. It's sort of like government and that's what we do every, every time we have a council meeting, we sort of take that bite out of the apple. We finally get to that finish line. But uh, yeah, Lou, I'm gonna miss you. Um, always enjoy working with you. I'm sure I'm gonna see you around town. And I always enjoy talking to you in regards to the history of the town. And uh, you're just a wealth of information. So, uh, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr.
If I may, I'll, I'll try to be brief. Uh, Lou, uh, thank you for uh, caring for the, the town's property. Uh, thank you for helping our residents. And I just, uh, something recent, and I could tell many stories in short time I've been here, but uh, I think this might stick with Lou. Um, last, late last week, we were finalizing uh, the next bond. Yeah, and the bond includes six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of engine two, uh, which should last about twenty-five to thirty years. And um, I know Lou, his, his dad, I knew, uh, very, very well-respected and very dedicated to the town of Bristol also, just like Lou. And uh, he was very involved with the fire department. So, we ran into a little bit of a problem because our town treasurer had not been sworn in yet and that is a very strict requirement. We have to provide the council uh, records and also the warrant. So, this was on a Friday. So, we got Julie Gauscher to come to town on a Saturday. She started on Monday. You needed to get her sworn in over the weekend. So, I did not hesitate. Anyone else would've said, ah, I'm not gonna call Lou to come in on a Saturday morning. I went to his office. I said, Lou, we need you to sign this warrant. You're the clerk. You need to sign, uh, swear the town treasurer in so we can proceed with the, with the uh, with the purchase of the uh, the bond. And Lou didn't even hesitate. He says, okay, what time? So, I will tell you, last Saturday morning, uh, Lou was on a porch at about ten-thirty in the morning on Hope Street swearing in our town treasurer. And he didn't even, he didn't even question it. So, Lou, I just hope you take pride when you see engine two, that the way I look at it is you had a lot to do with us uh, getting that fire engine. So, I, I hope when you see it go by, you say, I had something, I had a lot to do with that. So, I'm proud of you, Lou. And uh, I have the town coin. If everyone would bear with me, I'm gonna walk across the hall with my mask on. I'm gonna give it to Lou. And uh, hopefully you en- en- enjoy your retirement and thank you so much for all that you've done. I'm gonna walk over. Bear with me.
I'm way up in value lately.
We should just come out to, to where you all are.
We're all in different places.
Oh, I know. But I mean, you, you know, yeah, you're in your office and Nathan's at the council table, right?
Uh, um, Steve's trying to get in the door. I just gave him my card. Mike, go ahead while we wait for Steve.
Sure. I, I know it's unusual for me to speak, but I cannot, I cannot resist. Um, as you all know, I represent several towns. Of course, the best honor and privilege to represent Bristol as solicitor. So, um, over the past twenty-five years, I've had the honor of knowing many, many cler- clerks. And I want you to know that all the other clerks look up to Lou as the dean of the clerks. Whenever questions come up that no one else can answer, the phone call goes to Lou and inevitably, there's another nice word, inevitably he does have the answer. I cannot tell you, but it's been pleasure working with Lou and his expertise, his professionalism, his font of wisdom. Um, and as a personal friend, I'm going to miss, miss you dearly, Lou. And thank you for our relationship and thank you for all you've done for the town of Bristol as well as clerks throughout the state of Rhode Island.
Well put, Mike. Well put. Mr. Administrator, I can see Lou standing.
Lou, I have the, the town coin. And as you know, this is only awarded to lifelong town employees or visiting ship captains. It's kept in the town vault here in the finance department. And I hope you find it, it is rewarding as the others that received it. So, best wishes to your retirement and thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes, I, I can't help it, but I have to jump in. Um, I remember when I got into politics in two thousand and ten or was attempting to get into politics, uh, the first person I spoke with was Lou. Get some advice. Very similar to Tim. Um, I visit with him. I says, Tim, I mean, uh, Lou, this is new to me. I mean, him, I'm coming from the educational circle to uh, the political arena. And he says, just don't forget one thing. Every person who walked the town has won an election. And believe me, I went out and I walked about ninety percent of the town along with my family and support of many other people. And did I win? I won that election by high votes. So, very much appreciated. You know, uh, as the administrator pointed out, you know, uh, the most recent incident of, you know, about swearing in Julie, I can tell you, that's not unusual for Lou to actually go to the church when the wed- a marriage license is, is needed and actually be on site because somebody forgot to get their license. And the priest called him and says, Lou, help us rescue the situation. And here's Lou on his way to the church to actually do that. So, that it's not unusual for him to do that. And as it was pointed out by Mike, him being the dean of students, well, I'm currently working with the person who took over from the leadership of the clerks, who also has had thirty years or now thirty-two years of service and uh, speaks very highly of Lou. And he was very proud to take on, you know, the leadership from Lou to, to uh, lead the, the clerks throughout the town, the, the state. So, it's uh, it's an awesome thing. The other thing is, uh, I've had the pleasure to work with Lou as a, a town administrator. Uh, and many times, you know, similar to our current town administrator, you go to the end of the hall, I mean, at the end of the, of the building sometimes just to unload something and I says, hey, what's up here? Because that's where the institutional knowledge was. Uh, and certainly he was a great assistance, you know, throughout the four years. And obviously, I have the pleasure to walk every morning with who? Eh, the esteemed clerk, you know? And we've done that for quite a few years now. So, we'll continue to do that. Thank you, Lou, for all that you've done for our town. Thank you.
Continue taking those beautiful pictures too, Lou. You can publish them all. Like you need a book. I, I save them on my phone. They're so beautiful.
Would anybody else like to share anything? So, I'll finish it up. Uh, Lou, I, when I was a kid, my, um, when we'd be sitting at the table for dinner and one of three brothers, right? Um, their word would come up that uh, that in the conversation, we'd say, what does that mean? And my dad would reach and grab the big blue dictionary, you know, in paper, thin papers, right? And, and look through and we'd figure out what it was. And I, that's a great way of explaining you. You're kind of Google clerk kind of feel to it, right? So, we are so used to today being able to look up what you need at a moment's notice. But I can also, we all have experienced this multiple times, that when we need information, that we know, A, that you have it. And I gotta tell you, this is so much more important, that it was right. And it was right all the time. And that the way that you approach things, Tim harken back to twenty twelve, that's, Tim and I were elected the same year. And I recall sitting with you for a joint finance committee. I was the chairman, walking in as a new councilperson and chairman at JFC saying, okay, what do I do? And when is this due? And all of that. And you had it. And you've never lost it. And it's impressive. I've had people reach out to me from other communities that had to uh, come in for a death certificate, for, for challenging things. And they walked out of here singing your praises. And that's impressive to be in such a difficult place and then to walk away impressed by your service. Um, the people of Bristol have been truly fortunate to have you there. Diane Mediris really captured it while talking about the non-partisanship. Um, this community, you know, outside of election time, we are nonpartisan. But in through all of that time, and, and elections are a great example of that, is that, I'm not talking about this one. I'm talking about all of the ones that you've been involved in. So, the way that you handle yourself um, is, is just, it's, it's just impressive. And, and we're truly, we're gonna miss you there. Um, that you've done such an outstanding job. Um, and, and more than that though, we wish you the best in your retirements, enjoying your time with, with Susan and your family and your friends. Um, we do, and we'll lean on you harder now for additional pictures as Mary said, because you'll have that free time and maybe it'll be in other communities and other places along with Bristol. So, if there's nothing else, because I don't want to cut anybody off. No. Lou, did you want to say anything?
Just, just a, just a little, uh, a little something, uh, Mr. Chairman, because you realize there's still more business to do tonight.
I do. I do.
Okay. But um, I, I think probably the best way for me to sum it up and, and, and certainly I've, I've enjoyed working with, with all of the council members that I've had um, uh, since I've been in this position. Uh, but the thing that, that is probably the most telling is that from my very first day here in, in uh, December fifth, uh, two thousand and four, uh, and I'm sure it's gonna be the same through the very last day, is I can't wait to get here every day. And, and I'm disappointed when the workday's over, that I have to leave. Um, that's the way that I felt about this position from the, from the moment I began. And, and, and I've had several different careers in my lifetime, but this is the only one that I've ever felt that way about it. And um, I think it's a, it's a testament to the, to the work that has to be done and um, and to, also to the people that you work with when you're here. It's, it's a, it's a pretty amazing place to be and, and it's been a terrific experience and I wouldn't trade it for the world. Thank you.
It's outstanding. Outstanding. So, this, Lou, is, uh, thank you, Mary. Mary spearheaded uh, facilitating this. And I'm, I'm not saying it. I'll let Mary say it if she'd like to or we just let you open it up afterwards. This is from the council and the administrator. Um, and it's, it's a, obviously, it's not a huge token, but it, it, it's a small token of, of our affection for you and our, our tremendous respect for the job that you've done. So, thank you.
Oh, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
So, no action is necessary? And that's, that's a, that's a little gift for you, Lou. You don't have to write that down. Um, so, we're at the last piece, but I'll let you do that. Uh, Mr. Clerk?
You have, uh, following, Mr. Chairman, is a, a request for executive session. And I'm sure that the solicitor will guide you properly into that place. The motion will be to convene into executive session pursuant to forty-two, forty-six, five, A two litigation, Granoff versus De Mayo.
Is there a motion?
No.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? I do is that I just want to make sure everybody has the link for executive session Zoom before we switch off. You want to check before we do?
That one, I saw that one. I know we have that one.
Okay.
That was from me, Chris, right? That was from Chris?
That was from Chris.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's labeled executive session, so you can click on that. Okay. So, um, so any other discussion?
Other than, uh, Mr. Chairman, that after executive session, we'll be coming back to this public hearing to close the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Other than that? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony? Mary?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
I also vote "I", motion carries. And we'll be back in a little bit. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Mike.
The motion would be to close the executive session, seal the minutes and reconvene into public session.
So, move.
Do a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
I also vote "I".
The minute should reflect that a motion was made in executive session and now you need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman. Tim?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You better not be.
Happy Thanksgiving to all, in case I don't see you before then.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Good week, yeah. Be safe, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.